See, they don't want to slip by you because you fall.
Yeah. They're scared of them.
Okay, I'm gonna call the special meeting to order. It says September 12th, 23. We'll be discussing city office personnel, bond, and tobacco.
You got the time? Yeah, for a while.
Yeah, let's work there. Pushing through. A gentleman? So, what would you like to start with?
I don't know what we should start with.
I don't know what the bond is about.
I do.
Okay. So, the backhoe, we have to take somewhere and the injector is going out. And I think they talked to Morgan Diesel. It's gonna be like $7,000.
Because the injector pump is going out?
I believe, well, that's what they think it is. And they have to haul it. They can't do that here because of contamination. They can't do that in the field. That will have to be approved. Nothing's been done yet, they just... Well, we're also supposed to get a quote from Tam Quick. But they haven't called back at the end of the day.
Line for sending it to Morgan Diesel.
I don't know anything about it, you guys, but I wouldn't.
I do.
If you've got time tomorrow, maybe you need to go talk to the boys, but we'll still have to approve it. He goes somewhere because we got a water line we have to dig here pretty quick.
Well, that's not gonna be quick, uh, like three weeks.
Right.
Three or four weeks, minimum.
You may have to get another way to get the water line to the guy.
Well, they'll pull the pump and send it to Diesel Control and have it held with rebellion. All dealerships, then John Deere, Kay, Caves, Greener, they all sort of do the people from pulling it up. So, it's just a matter of how long. Now, we got, we just have money off of a fire truck. And I think they have to back this in three or four days.
I think the thing of it is, we need to get it before we get behind it, whatever we need to get done.
You know, Brian, uh, thanks, JTB. Well, I don't know what I think, um, if it's on the field. First of all, you should have all the water.
Right now, they just expect that that's what it is.
Well, I don't know, three or four days. But I want Tam Quick to come out and do a service call on it, and let me diagnose it. And then we'll have to have a special meeting and...
Yeah, when the one, when the one guy called and was gonna call back with a quote, he said they don't, we would have to haul it to Wichita.
Well, it was something exactly.
It was definitely Tam Quick. I think they also have to be hauled to Morgan Diesel, so...
Well, it's gonna be hauled wherever it goes.
Right, because it has to not have contamination.
Well... No. Nothing to do with the injector pump.
Yeah, I really would prefer that somebody go talk to the boys. If I was a mechanic covering these up there, I'd be making good luck.
Well, I don't think we know what to do until we figure something out.
Yeah.
So...
We can table it, but I've got to, what if you go talk to them, talk to them? See what it's actually doing.
Might be a phone call or a request after the leave.
Possibly. Okay, we can get on with the other.
Have you heard anything on the first one?
Nope. Not a word. I need to buy a little bit of ice. Forgot that.
You're sweating a lot. Come on now. You have to sit in the back.
Yeah. Okay. Four more than holding. And then you're done. It's been a lot of work. I mean, it's been a long time. And now we can go back.
Come on, yeah. How's it going? I'm not loving it. You don't mind? It's gonna be a while, right? I'm looking at everybody that's here. It's just, uh, it's hard. This is, this is hard on my hands. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know what I'm gonna do. 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 I don't know. I don't know what I'm gonna do. I don't know what I'm gonna do. Today is the 1st. Uh, we're gonna have a meeting. Uh, I don't know what I'm gonna do. 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 I don't know. I don't know what I'm gonna do. I don't know what I'm gonna do. Yeah. I don't know what I'm gonna do. 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 Yeah. I don't know what I'm gonna do. 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 Yeah. I'm very, very, very proud of them. You don't even know, you know, when you got, uh, I'm, I'm, I don't know what it's called, Tom, and then you all say it. And you didn't get enough in your mind. Yeah, I feel that, but I mean, you can't. It really is hard. I don't know what I'm gonna do. Yeah. You know, you're trying to tell me. You go ahead. And I'm very confused. And I'm, uh, uh, I don't know. Oh, wow. Look. Look. It's bad. It's a little bit hard to handle my side. Yeah, I feel that, but it's, uh, 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 uh. It's a lot of things. Yeah, I know. It's a little bit of a, uh, uh, uh. I'm not ready to have that much of a talk. You don't know. I'm a guy. Yeah, I was gonna, uh, uh, uh. You wanna, uh, uh, uh. I don't care if you're a guy. You're a guy, you're a guy. But I'm not gonna, uh, uh, uh. I mean, you know, uh, uh, uh. So, I don't know, I don't know. It's bad. I don't know what I'm gonna do. I don't know what I'm gonna do. I don't know. It's hard to tell you. I don't know. It's hard to tell you. I don't know why I have to go back there. You know, it's just hard. And now, now, you really must do it. Yeah, I know. It's hard to tell you. I don't know. You're lucky. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know why I have to do that. Don't you have to do that? I don't know.
Uh, 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 uh. What's the, what's the, what's the, uh? Uh, the reason why? Uh, the fact that you're all, uh, 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 uh. Uh, thirty percent. That.
I don't know why you want to keep it in town. I don't know. Yeah. You know, why you want? You don't know.
I just don't know, I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Oh, yeah. No. I don't know. I don't know. It's a big, um, thing. Yeah, but he's a lot of things. I mean, he's a person out in town, but he's all, uh... Well, you know, it's, uh... You know, uh... Uh, uh... I don't know. You know, uh... I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what I'm gonna do. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Hey, hey. I'm sorry, honey. I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry. Whoa. Oh, yeah. I mean, I just don't think I always remember. And we need to, in the future, we're gonna have to start. I have to do that. But I'm also, uh... I don't know. Wow. I don't know. You have a... I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Other than, you know, Tommy, you know, so, not a very good, uh, good, uh, that's what's going to be. Sure, I don't have to be. I don't have to. I mean, he's, uh... I, he's, uh, everything. He's, uh, uh... But just, um, uh, uh, uh. So, we, uh, uh... Oh. Uh, uh... Uh, you know, uh, uh... I think it's hard to, uh, 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 uh. I don't have, uh, 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 uh. I, I do it for him. Yeah, I, I'm glad they're okay. I'm, uh, uh, uh. I don't have to be, uh, uh. I won't be happy if you're, uh... When you, uh, uh, boy, you, you're, uh, 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 uh. Almost, you know, uh... Yeah, well, uh, 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 uh. Uh, 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 uh. He's, uh, 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 uh. It's, uh, it's, uh, uh, uh. The way that I was called about, uh, 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 uh. That's not moving, uh, uh, uh. That's not, uh, 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 uh. We don't see it.
Oh. Oh, wow.
It all, uh... And he only, uh, uh... I don't know. I mean, uh, uh... Yeah, I heard, uh... What you got, uh, uh?
I'm gonna come over and ask and I'm gonna do it.
Yeah.
You can buy your work.
You stopped the traffic, lady.
Huh?
You were blocking traffic.
Call a meeting back, order no action taken.
Uh, it's, uh, uh. I'm gonna, uh, 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 uh. It's a major town, so, uh, 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 uh. I see.
I see.
So, uh, 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 uh. Probably gonna need one, uh, four minutes, uh, we gotta go back and out.
Five minutes?
Time.
Five?
Time.
Do you want to go top, first and take one with us?
Top, please.
Okay. We'll have somebody come back and get one of you at a time.
Um, um, um. We need to, uh, uh, uh. I have to go to the store, I'll treat it. But, um, I have to, uh, yeah.
Do you have New Orleans, St. Louis, and Salt Lake sometimes?
I'm not allowed to go there. It's gonna be hard. Because, you know, I have to be like Jesus, man. Like spiral pole stuff. And if she carries milk, she's gonna be too high. And of course, being from the south, I've got a kind of power from now on, you know? But anything with expiration based on that, it's pretty hard.
We have to have a lot of, uh, free milk, so...
Ooh.
You like chocolate milk?
Sometimes.
Um, because I'm guessing you're lactose intolerant, or somebody is.
My hope and my...
Try the chocolate milk Dylan's, not Walmart sells. I am lactose intolerant, and I can drink that like it's going out of style, and it does not bother me, and I don't know why.
Well, even if it's not, even if it is lactose, it don't bother me.
It's the thing that thinks like, I can eat a bowl of cereal and have to run to the bathroom, but I can drink that whole dang gallon of that chocolate milk? Never bothers me. It's a dangerous thing.
Could you skip through a lot of milk because you have coffee?
I bet you thought he was crazy when he dropped you in Joe Henry's.
Well, I don't think we ever intended to actually live here. It's something that's happening. I think it didn't want to be the fact, because if he grew up in that, he would not want it back. But we couldn't do it to us, because then it was too far from his work. Well, and then the house happened to be available, so we were just like, I guess it's in the room.
Yeah, that's true, I mean...
Turn on what you make of it. Turn on, be a shithole, or it can be a beautiful place. It's literally, it's what you make of it, and if you don't mind, and you plan accordingly, and, you know, get your groceries all on one go and everything, it's not that bad. You know, or just feel like me and have a car that gets thirty-five miles to the gallon.
Maybe you never drive.
That's not the point. I drive to Wichita every weekend, thank you.
No, I'm not really, I mean, I don't have a neighbor on either side, and then the one that I do have on the corner is not exactly nice, so... I don't, I love it.
Oh, the dead Lawrence?
I don't, I mean...
Lives in the trailer?
Yeah. She don't like her style.
It's not Lawrence, it's McRehalds.
Yeah, McRehalds, yeah.
It's the husband. I'm never talking to him.
She looks like a guy.
Well, you're starting to shoot my dog. Even though she was on our company.
Yeah, she is all, you know...
I mean, usually I would say that one thing, but, uh...
Yeah.
I don't mind her sometimes either, but I don't want to shoot her.
Right.
It's about being a dog.
Yeah.
When you look at her, you don't think there's a thought behind her eyes. She's so down.
But crap, the cost of living is really high, uh...
Yeah. Not, I'm like, I like his family, but I don't want to live right next to them.
Right.
I can't handle someone who's like... His father's fine. I don't have a problem. His father tends to help us out all the time at our house when something goes wrong.
Mm-hmm.
You can, uh, uh, talk about friends?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know the family.
Who?
Everett's butt. Did Levi's father get his shit straight, or, uh...
No.
I don't think Levi's ever gonna get his shit straight.
He's with a new tailor, and she's pregnant.
And then, what's her, uh, what's his face, Levi's brother that Ginny dated, oh, God. He's interesting.
Michael, or...
He's married.
He's married.
Really?
Well, she has two sons.
I'm sure you all about him.
But...
I've met him a few times. He and Cole have been together six years.
Yeah, what's that saying? Judge not lest ye be judged.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm allowed to judge.
Isn't the other one, she's a prostitute or this one?
Well, I think it's Michael. Yeah. He was born with no inner feeling. He doesn't know that he's doing it and...
He doesn't have any excuse in those.
Yeah. Levi.
Me and him can't be in the same room.
His opinion, maybe.
Yeah, we didn't allow it. So, we're not allowed to say that, because...
And then there's what? Kayla, the girl. Michael, yeah.
Okay, well...
Yeah.
You and her have the same name. She's the only one I like.
Watch her.
She's different now.
Yeah, I'll get her.
Good. I'm going to do that.
Yeah. What the cost of living in Pride of HUSS is just crazy.
Yeah, I mean, it's ridiculous. Just a lot of gas, both from what I've heard is looking to...
Oh, my God, it is.
Yeah.
If you don't notice, the gas prices in HUSS are crazy. Or in Pride are crazy.
I don't know why it's so high there.
Yeah, I don't know. Well, your kids are too little for school. But I've never seen a school you had to pay.
Yeah, until we went to Kansas, I've never...
Yeah!
But my son started his one-up here. But Cole wants to make it better than that. He doesn't want to go to the church though.
That costs money though.
About again.
Oh. Okay. Bye-bye! I must step outside and see him, but... They don't go in here.